Great nation. Lord, we just pray tonight for the Kirkland and Batiste family and just wrap your arms around them as they go through this unthinkable tragedy. Lord, I pray that the decisions we make not only honor the city but also honor you. Just keep us on your path. Lord, please bless us with some rain because we need it and it's in your holy name up great. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state of God, one indivisible.
Thank you both. If you haven't silenced your phones, I'd ask you to do that at this time. I'll silence mine. Public comment, I don't have anything for public comment, approve the minutes of the June 19th meeting. You've got a copy of that in front of you.
I move we approve the minutes of the June 19th. Uh, June minutes, minutes.
I'll second.
Richard made a motion and James had made a second to approve the June 19th minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Financial report.
Leslie.
Do you have the full even aid time to report? If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time. You also have in front of you the sales tax report for the money that we received in July.
Are we okay with our expense side of the business? I know we're 74% in general fund and 88% in utility fund.
The utility fund that, okay, in the general fund, there is the, ARPA expenses are showing up as expenses even though, you know, we have the funds to pay for them. And the same way in the utility, on the budget summary, I put how much expense is showing in the utility fund for the GLO and the Texas Water Development Board. In the future, when we get a grant like that, we will make it a separate fund of its own.
Okay.
But it's just, it's kind of easier to just put it on with the regular stuff so you can look at it every month, but it does skew the financials. So...
Well, ARPA funds are in the expense. I mean, it's in the revenue part two?
Yes.
Is it, okay, it's in the same year?
Yes.
Do you have an estimate of what our percent revenue will be when the year is ended?
I don't.
Because normally it's around 98%.
Yeah.
You know, just, just at 100.
I, I don't right now. I do have the budget sheets that have the up to March with the projection, but I don't have that number in my, in my head.
Okay. I'll get it. I'll find it. Just sort of, at least find out what it is and I'll find out, I'll get with you and see what, what you think. I know it's a guesstimate, but...
Yeah.
Well, that'd make me feel better knowing that, you know, we're going to be 120% revenue, being 100% expenses is still a good thing. 120% expenses.
Well, and as always, our utility expenditures, you know, we don't get our biggest revenue until the months coming up. So, at this time of year, our expenditures are always ahead of our revenues in the utility fund.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you very much. Item number six, Board of City Commissioners discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion consideration request for Ranger and Cisco College for hotel motel tax, event funds for sponsorship of the third annual Wrangler, Ranger Roundup Volleyball Tournament.
Four, sorry. Yeah, four.
Third annual, what did I say, four?
It's a four. It's four.
Third consecutive COVID impacted.
I just read what they give me.
Okay. Hi, I'm Nicole Smith. I'm the volleyball coach at Ranger College and I'm rolling solo this year. I mean, normally I have, I have the counterpart from Cisco, but this year, it's actually my assistant who got, just got the head job at Cisco.
Oh.
So, yeah. She's adjusting and moving over there. So, due to your helping us in the past, this is the strongest field that we will have. We have two teams coming in from Kansas. We have, they're both nationally ranked. We have Seward College coming out of, Seward Tech coming liberal Kansas, and then we have Coffee Will coming, and then we have Midland coming. So, with the, with this tournament, we're looking at probably over 60 to 70 hotel rooms over a two-day span and then plus them eating in this area, whether it's in Cisco, Eastland, not really Ranger, we don't really have restaurants, so more so Eastland area. But y'all's generosity has helped us really step up, I mean, to put the field that we have for this, this year's tournament. So, we're really excited. We're excited. It's a great tournament and ready to get after it.
Good deal. We've got a recommendation by the city manager. Y'all've got a little sheet in front of you if you hadn't seen it, that we fund the entire 6120. We've got a balance of 19,000 in that fund and the city manager has recommended we...
You don't normally, you don't normally...
We haven't normally done that, but...
You don't, you know, so...
Yeah, I know, but I was going to let you speak to say how much you need to. We, we think this is a great event and y'all do very well.
We would appreciate whatever amount you'd give us. I think you normally give us 3,500 and we just, we, we make it work and we appreciate anything that you give us.
Did you give them all of it? Is that what you said earlier?
We had, I thought we had.
I, I think we should.
But I'm...
I think it's a great deal.
I do too.
And we've got the money to do it. I'll say we do it.
I move we...
What say you?
I move we, we, 6,100, we found 6,100 of the, of the Wrangler, Ranger Roundup.
6120 or 61...
Whatever it is, 6120.
6120.
We'll take 6,000. We'll find 6,000. 6,000, it's easy. We split it. We, us and Cisco.
Okay. What's your motion?
6120.
6120. Thank you.
That's it.
You got a motion. Do you second that? Motion by Richard to fund the 6120 for the volleyball tournament, second by Shirley. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all come out and watch us whenever we're hosting it. Like I said, it's, you'll, you'll see one team that will be 11 internationals deep. So, come on out.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I talk to you for just one second?
Item number two, discussion consideration, second reading, ordinance 23-894, and ordinance of the City of Eastern Texas amending Article 5 Dangerous Buildings in Chapter 5 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances, City of Eastern Texas by amending in Section 576 inspections and notice of abatement and provide for alternate method of providing notice, providing repealer, and certifiability clauses and establishing an effective date.
Yes, commissioners, we went over this last month. This is just, you know, to kind of set a clear-cut path on when we have to go down this road of dangerous buildings and condemning them, that there are guidelines in place and we're going to give that our homeowner every chance to make contact and make the corrections before we proceed with this.
I move that we approve on the second reading of ordinance 23-894.
Second.
You got a motion from Cecil. Who seconded that? Richard? Motion from Cecil to approve the second reading of 23-894 and second from Richard. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item number three, discussion consideration or approved resolution 2023-08 to deny the rate change application proposed by Encore.
Yes, commissioners, we go through this every year. This is just to be part of the rates, the committee. We're too small to step out on our own and we need somebody to lobby for us to help us get an effective rate on our electricity.
I still think we need a rubber stamp with red ink.
Denied.
Yes.
All right. Well, a motion will suffice right now.
I'll, I'll, no, not get a rubber stamp.
A motion from Cecil to approve resolution 23, 2023-08.
I'll second that.
Second from Shirley. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, discussion consideration or approve or disapprove of Eastern County Appraisal District Resolution 2023, yes, 071062.
And to handle most of this discussion, Randy Clark with appraisal districts here to answer questions. What, do you want to go ahead and start, Randy?
Sure. Basically, my board of directors has approved the building of a new facility for the appraisal district. We've been saving for this for over 20 years. We've always had a super conservative board, which I appreciate, and never wanted to go in debt to build a building. So, now they think they have enough funds and feel good about doing it. So, they passed a resolution to, to build a new facility. We've kind of worked in connection with the Economic Development and the Community Foundation. Community Foundation has donated a lot for us to build on and so we're excited about it, but it does require me to get a resolution from each of the taxing institutes to do this. The biggest questions I get is, it's not going to cost the taxing entities any more additional money. In our budget, we've had a line item that's been funding over the years for a future contingency to build, so that line item will just switch over to the maintenance of the building. So, there will not even be an increase in the budget as we move forward either.
That's why you've been raising appraisals the last several years. Allen knows the secret.
Right.
What lot, what lot are you building this on? Where are you building it?
It's been surveyed out. There's, there, it's behind the crisis center, but there's a lot between us and the crisis center, so we're two lots back.
You'll be behind, you'll be south of the crisis center.
Yes, sir.
That's about where the foundation of Edo College is and...
The next lot over.
We, we avoided that essentially.
They're a great foundation. They've been there forever.
Yeah.
You don't want to dig into it, do you?
Randy, may I ask one question? Have the other taxing entities that they've, they've all been...
Everybody I've talked to on the phone is excited about it. The county as well, I mean, the county's kind of cramped for space, so I think they're excited about kicking us out of there. Yeah, I've gotten favorable responses. Most people are glad that we're going to be out and away from an elevator that typically doesn't work and we send out notices.
What size building are you planning to build?
Heated and cooled areas 4189.
Pretty good size.
Yes, ma'am.
Got room for all the girls to work in.
That's right. Our, our biggest need of space is for our boardroom, for the appraisal review board when we're meeting with citizens in regards to their protest on property values. And just the logistics of the building around is not the most secure facility for us to be in. There's, there's one way in and one way out and fourth and fifth floors are probation and so it just, it's not been an ideal situation, but we've stuck with it to not have to borrow money.
Good plan.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the Eastern County Appraisal District Resolution Number 2023-071062. A second.
Motion from James and a second from Richard to approve the appraisal district resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Now, we'll know where to find you. Item number five, discussion consideration to approve the Fourth Amendment to the contract and agreement with Waste Connections Lone Star Incorporated, formerly known as IESI Taxes Incorporated.
Yeah, yes, commissioner. As we all know, we've been in business with Waste Connections. They've been handling our solid waste service for many, many years. Trash is one thing that a city does not have to bid on for services after so many years like, like our banking contract and others. I did a lot of research and talking to a lot of other cities about the services that they offer that, quite honestly, other competitors don't, that use their services when it comes to bulk pickup, leaf and debris removal and stuff like that. In a meeting that we had with Patrick and Sean, we, we talked about some issues that, quite frankly, I think over the past couple minute, month since we've had that meeting have been, it's been better, I, I think. And the biggest caveat that I found in there on page one at the very last paragraph is a three and a half percent cap on rate increases, basically, when it comes to capital improvement and stuff like that, correct?
Yes.
Everything else in our contract, or, or, excuse me, this amendment will be same, same services, same amount of roll-offs for the convenience center and so on with that. Taking all these into consideration, I, I just, I felt like it would probably be best if we just signed a new amendment with them instead of doing an RFP and going up for bids. I personally, this is just my personal feelings, think that it, it could possibly be an increase in price for others in price if we went with a new competitor. Their prices are very competitive across other ci, with other cities, so...
The only question I have...
Yes, ma'am.
JJ, is, it says, you're deleting, well, okay, deleting entirety in its entirety, the First Amendment. So, you're saying that all this is doing is just changing that very last, everything else is the same?
Yes, ma'am. We sent it to our city attorney and she actually made that, that change in there and she just kind of cleaned some things up that, that she recommended that change. And she put where, basically, all this on the, the back part three, four, five and six that she, and she felt very comfortable with what they had proposed and everything and, Waste Connections agreed with the way she cleaned it up.
I like the three and a half percent cap.
Well, my, my question, my question is in that number two, the first line that says, "The base rate shall remain in effect through October 31st, 2024."
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Over here on the back, I'm looking at this deal, it said, "Proposed pricing schedule effective December 20, December 1st, 2024." And these don't look different to me. I've gone through it twice and if there's something different, I hadn't found.
I haven't either.
Yes, so basically...
Oh, we got somebody here?
Yes, Patrick, Waste Connections, sir.
So, basically, we're not going to do any price increase until December 1st if it's needed, you know? So, December 1st of 2024 is when we would do a price increase and at that, you're capping it at 3.5%, you know? So, if it's, the CPI is lower, then we'll do lower, you know, but we're not going to go any higher than 3.5%.
So, this proposed schedule on here really doesn't mean anything.
Well, I, I don't know on that one. I don't have the...
I don't know where this, I don't know where this came from.
This came from Sean.
Yeah. I didn't get that.
With, with Sean.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, this is, could be changed, yeah.
Right, right. So, basically, we're not, we're not charging any, anything for the first year at all.
I got that part.
And then...
Well, I got that part, but I got back here and it said, "Proposed pricing schedule will affect to December 2024."
Right.
So, it's a good, we're good for another year.
Yes.
I mean, I, this says I'm good for two years.
Right.
That's what it looks like when they send an increase.
Yes.
This is the point.
Yes, definitely. So, this is, this is, what's that, for the...
It says December...
2024.
Yeah, first.
Yeah.
It shows all the same pricing, but...
Exactly.
That's not what you're proposing, right?
Right. Now, I'm not saying we're going to increase December 1st at all, you know? I'm just saying there will be nothing for at least a year.
Okay.
And this contract would be, or this overall contract would be for five years?
Yes, sir.
Built 2020?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
With no more than a 3.5% increase in one year. Which is, which is good.
Yeah, because I think our increase is...
I was trying to get two years out of you.
Yeah.
Me too.
What it says, I'm just reading what it says. Okay. What's your pleasure?
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the contract and agreement with Waste Connections Lone Star Inc.
Okay. Motion by Shirley, the second by James. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. City manager is breaching.
Okay, I want to, we're still working with landowners, but I think the biggest excitement for the month was TechDoc called and wanted a 911 address for the, to put a power station at Main Street and I-20. Typically, what that means, and I'm trying to contact TechDoc and had got a response, is that they're fixing to put traffic signals there when they do this. So, it seems like we are moving in the right direction.
Been a long time coming.
Yes.
A long time.
You know, it was supposed to be done a year ago.
I would get excited, but we had surveyors here last year doing something for a project 10 years from now, so just, just saying.
True story.
Okay.
And...
That is good news. That needs to be done.
And hopefully by next month, I'll have, we'll have pictures of the new airport project that will be pretty much complete because they're fixing to get underway with paving. We have a pre-paving meeting on Friday, so, and those have to fall within a certain amount of time per TechDoc regulations. It's, I mean, it's going to look really good and really different. I was out there the other day, a couple of the pilots were flying in and they were really, really amazed with the way it looked. And that magazine is doing a follow-up...
Follow-up.
A follow-up to their first piece about our airport. A national aviation magazine did a profile of our airport and they're coming back to do a second story on it.
That's great.
Yeah.
Good, good deal.
Yeah.
Super.
Good.
And one more thing, starting tomorrow, I will be out of town through Saturday.
Who's in charge of your absence?
I'm not going to be here.
Leslie's not going to be here? Ether.
Boy, you planned that well. Tony, you're up, buddy.
Man of the checkered shirt.
Yeah.
Want my chocolate?
What do you want to speak about, huh? Do what?
I want my chocolate liver.
Yeah.
We'll give you the answer. We'll get you out.
We want it done right. You don't want that job, trust me. Trying to protect you.
Yeah.
Are you through, sir?
Yes, sir, I am.
You have any question for JJ?
No.
Okay.
Happy New York. See you, brother.
Yes, thank you.
Who's next? Odin Porson.
Yes, sir. Started June with 54 spoken cases, very open 37 new ones, closed 17, 74 cases within a month. Out of those, total violations opened were 68, total violations closed were 25, issued five citations, had one property reported for back taxes. Fines assessed this month, 2,597. We had one property abated by the city for a cost of $102 and the good thing was, is that the gentleman that owned that property found out about it and made sure that he paid his lien on that property. So, that $102 that cost us, and, and we put a lien on, uh, going to put a lien on the property, he came down and paid that not too long after the property was abated. It was one on South Hillcrest, that blue one on the corner.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. And we have a good mailing address for that gentleman now, too. So, out of citations, we had two for tall weeds, one for unlawful property nuisance, depositing, dumping or burning. It was a repeat. And then two more that had unlawful property nuisance, depositing, dumping, burning, no water service and a fence permit. Fence, guy that built the fence without a permit ended up coming in and get the permit for it. He was good. And that's it for code enforcement. Unless you have any questions.
Do you have any questions? Don't?
I have just a quick one. That property that's across from the woodlands that is in such horrible, horrible condition...
It's outside city limits.
It's outside.
Yes. Believe, if we, if we could have gone after that one...
That one we would have, but it's just, it is just outside the city limits. Across, yes, across the street.
This side is inside the city limits, but you go, it's outside the city limits right over there. And it goes to, that side of the street goes to, to Hillcrest.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
You make a motion to add, actually?
That's it.
You make a motion to add, actually?
Yeah.
Okay, police report.
You have more, Paul?
No.
For the police department, we had 243 calls for service in June, 61 offensive reports. We had 175 business checks, 26 arrests. We filed 29 cases with the district attorney's office, one being a juvenile at this time. We wrote 118 citations and 265 warnings, a total of 383 traffic contacts. Our animal control lady, she had 95 calls for service that ended up with 11 citations issued, 14 warnings, 21 dogs were impounded and she adopted out 11. So, she had a pretty busy week. We had a, a warrant that we actually did a search warrant in May on a local drug dealer that ended up, we were trying to work, but they did not work, so we ended up rearresting that person and ended up with over 100 grams of methamphetamines, quite, quite a bit of cocaine and some more charges on some other people outside of the area off of that arrest. Officer Whistle, Whitzel obtained his intermediate license, so we're happy for that. We did have a boat stolen out of Eastland and we recovered that in Abilene and filed charges on the person that stole the boat. We had eight other major, or I would call big drug arrests within the city in May that we took care of. Walmart has now got an asset protection employee again, which has upped our calls out there, so we're getting quite a few more calls for theft and stuff, so they're enforcing their theft again out there. We did have one extortion of a child over the internet, which we tracked down to a location in Africa. Of course, we have no jurisdiction, Africa can't file any charges, but all those IP addresses and all that stuff's been turned over to the Secret Service and we closed that case. 26 different individuals arrested for numerous charges. Cake went through K-9 school, got out of that, so we were excited about that and just dealing with the summer heat. Had a pretty busy month last month.
Now, tell me again, Walmart has hired an asset protection?
Yes, and they've had them in the past where there, there are people that watch and mingle in the ground and then they catch people shoplifting. For a while, Walmart got away from that completely and now they're getting back into it. Well, when that happens, our calls, of course, go up because they catch them, call us and we end up filing charges on them. So, that does help.
I'm not Walmart, dude.
Might have been the theft out there.
That's good. I've had people tell me that Walmart just quit, use just something Walmart.
And I think they're still...
People walk in your store, eat food, walk down the aisle.
Physically stop them anymore, but at least they've got somebody dedicated to watching that now.
Good. Are they armed or they just somebody?
No, they're not armed.
They call you for help?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious on business checks, in April, 443, May, 227, June, down to 175. What's that?
Well, we're, we're, an officer down again, but, um, that's something that I pushed pretty heavy, and I was pushing it real heavy in April, and we've just kind of backed off a little bit, but we're going to pick it back up. But I think they're filing a lot of cases and concentrating on traffic enforcement right now.
Pretty big drop, and I'm curious.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Chief Pitts. Chief Williamson. Thank you, Tim.
Good evening. Uh, our total calls for June were sixty-eight, and we, we actually dipped a little bit from last month, and we were kind of surprised with, uh, the heat that we had, but the little bit of precipitation that is scattered through here is, uh, is keeping us fairly stable. That, this month of June, we ran two-point-two-six calls a day. Forty-six of those occurred within the city limits. Uh, seventeen, we traveled outside to the county. Uh, we, uh, participated in five mutual aid events, um, in June, installed one smoke detector, and, uh, we were alarmed sixteen times after ten o'clock in night before seven in the morning. Well, we attended three structure fires in the month of June, four grass fires, and one, uh, vehicle fire. Thirty-four times, we assisted the EMS crews out on medical emergencies, and we attended eight, uh, motor vehicle accidents, um, and seven public assists, nine false alarms or some type of investigation. We had two hazardous material type events. Uh, one was natural gas, and one was a poly pipe ruptured, and, uh, we lost product, um, out north of the airport. So we attended that. We lost two members due to relocation, um, and, uh, so as of July fourth, we're back up to full staffing. So the fire department's running, uh, on the, on the normal scheduling and with the eight-to-five chief. And so the beauty of that is that we had two members responding where previously, when we were short one, uh, we didn't have that eight-to-five, uh, person to respond with the ambulance. So we're back to normal staffing, and, uh, from the fire marshal's office, we have three certificate of occupancies pending. I've made contact with those businesses, they're in the process of, uh, finishing up the, 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 uh, small projects to get open, and we'll get those certificate of occupancies, um, completed and get those businesses open for business.
Mutual aid normally is one or two a month, and you had five.
Yeah.
What was that?
Uh, I don't, I know, uh, the three structure fires, all three of those were significant working fires in Ranger. So I know three of those were, uh, uh, one was over, but, uh, we responded with Odin into their primary response district, uh, and I don't recall the fifth one.
I think that would be a lot of that, too.
The, the three structure fires, I actually thought, well, I kind of mentioned in the report last month, I thought it was going to spike a little, I thought it was more than that, but, uh, those were, uh, three significant fires.
And medical assists, is that all for the hospital, for the ambulance service? When I see medical assist, thirty-four, that's all thirty-four, the ambulance service?
Uh, yes, sir, those are categorized if we respond with the ambulance. Um, if it's an event where it's not EMS or, or we're not responding with the ambulance, you'll see it in the public assist. So those, ever one of those that are medical assist are when we respond conjunctionally with the EMS.
You're going to help the amb.
Yes. Mrs. Smith, but in turn, yes, the ambulance. And if the, if the ambulance is not a part of the event, then, then we categorize it into a public assist. So that, that breaks those two categories out.
I'd be pretty happy to see them. When they show up ahead of. They showed up last from my wife.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't have any problem with that. I'm just making sure that that number is total.
Yeah, uh, and, and that's what I'm, uh, when you see that number, that is oriented with the ambulance.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Uh, the other, it, you could add the motor vehicle accidents in there, because typically, with, with a report of a motor vehicle accident, we always, we also respond in conjunction with a vet. So you can bring those two categories.
Yeah, but a motor vehicle accident, you're there for other reasons.
It could be, yeah.
I heard you're there for.
It could be, exactly.
You know, with traffic with the police or anything else. But the medical assist.
Is for, to assist.
Particularly for the ambulance.
The transport service.
To help the ambulance people get somebody transported. Any other question? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank all of you. Mitch, you got a motion to adjourn?
Sir.